President Communication would be next.
Okay, Denise is going to give out for me two documents that I want the board to have. One is, is that I had put together a piece from the chairman to the community to thank them for looking at the H&amp;H presentation, talked a little bit about what we're trying to do as a board and addressing the fact that we have problems, but we're working on it and we'll continue to keep them updated, so many words. The response that I got, I know I had sent that to the Newsletter Journal and because Mr. Bonner had said that he would publish informational articles from time to time for us. The response that I got was the other document that you're going to get, which was a response that was sent to Randy, Denise and myself, and CC'd to Mr. William Curley, Mary Stroka, and Carrie Droste. So because he included one of our board members on there, I felt that it was important that the whole board see it as a part of the transparency that we always talk about. So I think when you read it, you can make up your own mind about what you see there. Part of the problem that he did talk about was, is the confusion over the special meeting that we had the other day. And so I just wanted to say that I believe that that agenda was not clear, and I'm sorry for that. But there was a piece where we thought that we were going to have to have an exec piece of the meeting, and it was decided last minute, and not by any executive committee, as stated in Mr. Bonner's letter, because we don't even have an executive committee. But it was decided that we do the personnel piece first and get that off the table so that H&amp;H could do their presentation. They did it for, they did part of it for the board, but they were really, what we went into exec session for it was to talk about personnel informations with H&amp;H that was totally appropriate. And then we came out into public meeting and had H&amp;H do their demonstration and their, we had it as a presentation. What it really should have said was, you know, consideration to adopt them, their contracts. So that again was our mistake. So going forward, we will meet, as Denise had said, we will be meeting on Mondays before the board meetings. We were, we were actually meeting on Thursday's prayer too. But we're going to meet on Mondays and make sure that the agendas are clear, and when we have special meetings, we'll do the same. And I know that we have, it looks like we've had a ton of special meetings, but as, as it was stated, I believe in the Newsletter Journal this week, that we have been through a lot. We have had to hire two new CEOs. We've had a lot of comings and goings of personnel. We've had some issues, as stated, as stated with the, you know, the clinic and, and we've had other people talk about problems with, with morale, whatever, which we're diligently working on, and is a part of the reason that we did hire H&amp;H to come in. So before we go any further, I want, I need a motion to ratify the contract that we decided on during that special meeting that includes the $45,000 for the assessment and also for the $108,000 plus or minus for the CHRO so that we have it once again in public. May I have that motion?
I still do.
May I have a second?
All seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so once again, it's approved in public and we have it noted in the minutes, but I think, I wanted to be sure that you saw the responses from Mr. Bonner, because some of those things that he said frankly just weren't true. And, but we can continue to talk about that stuff, and we can continue, I think it's more important that we continue to talk about positive things, that we continue to show and prove to the community that we're here for the, for the good of the hospital, the employees and the community, and that we are transparent, and that we will continue to do whatever we need to do to make everything as good as possible. I will tell you that I was accused of the chairman letter as being, as being, excuse me, I lost my transcript, a part of my reelection piece, which is absolutely not true. It was really just what I said it was for. And the other thing is, it wasn't, had, didn't have anything to do with a special H&amp;H meeting, and that's why Jamie didn't put it out, because it wasn't anything to do with the meeting. It was just a message from me, the chairman of the board, to the community to thank them for watching the H&amp;H stuff, presentation, and to also let them know that we're here for them and that we're working hard. So I just wanted that to be clear, and wanted to make sure that you saw it.
Dottie, I just wanted to say thank you for giving this to the full board. I wasn't sure if it was my place to do that, but it was definitely your place, and I think it's the right thing, and I thank you for doing that.
Well, you're welcome. I also wanted to mention that I read in the article today that was posted about the H&amp;H meeting, that somewhere in small print, it said that this, this mind letter and the response that Mr. Bonner sent to us were going to be on their website today, but of course I couldn't see it anywhere, so that's why I wanted to be sure that you had it.
Well, I'm sorry that he's, he's holding back. I don't understand.
Well, and I don't think it personally, but on some things that he is stating here, I don't need a pat on the back.
Some things he is stating, he's not wrong, I think, so.
Other things he's saying, he is wrong. But I don't know why he singled out to certain people when he answered an email, he's trying to relate to board, he shouldn't include every board member, not just one or two. And he's gone, you know, sort of correctly, instead of one community member, if he has a thousand community members, they should go up to a thousand community members instead of one or two. That's just my suggestion.
What I would like to just say is, is that, I've said this a million times, I've said it on my website, I've said it in the chairman note, that if anybody has questions, they are certainly welcome to ask any one of us, and especially myself, just come and ask me, I'll tell you the truth, and I'll always tell you the truth.
Did you respond to this at all, Carrie?
I didn't.
Did you receive it? I mean, did you have to see it, read it?
But like I said, I wasn't sure if it was my place to, why, what's it, do you know? I don't know, other than you CC'd man a lot of stuff, just because of my other role.
Now, because this is, this is the second email I got in a week, I mean, that he included Carrie on, which I can't understand, he keeps including Carrie and myself. Last time I had to do the health insurance premiums, which I answered to Mary, so I'm not, I'm not sure, I keep getting emails, I just keep answering back on what they're wanting, giving the correct answer yesterday, I worked with Charlerie and Piper and the insurance premiums, so I'm not sure.
So I, I think, and this isn't quite your point, this is sort of in the same thing, but I think it would have saved a lot of trauma if, before we went into that executives that, if we had just switched it. If we would, especially since William was here, since we had somebody from the public here, Walter was here, we should have just done like we always do and do the, the public part of the meeting first and went on to the executive session. And I, and I should have said that myself.
But it was on the agenda that it was.
Exactly. Well, I think, and as it makes, right, in the future, moving forward, that should be. That, I mean, and if no one had been here, it wouldn't have been a big deal at all.
Right, right.
But with people here, we should have just made that decision on the fly and switched it.
Also, I did see this article in the Gazette, so the Gazette did post this, the West County.
Oh, did they?
They did post.
So you're getting two different interpretations, or at least there's one paper that's willing to do it and another paper that's not willing to do it or to do this. So there, like I'm saying, there's, it's opinions.
Yeah.
I mean, I see, I believe, I believe, I believe, I believe, and you can say that all you want, but I'm saying, there's one paper within the county that did post this, that didn't feel it was, they didn't have the same opinion as this, the new letter did. So I'm just, for what it's worth, it's not the consensus opinion among, at least media, at least the West County.
Right.
Yeah, I need to say it's that they will not post anything unless they are paid posting anywhere, and the Gazette will.
Yeah.
No.
Stephen has his hand up. Stephen has his hands up.
Board members, may I speak as an advisor that you guys have hired?
Yes.
On a couple of subjects that I hear, if I may?
Certainly.
So one, I've read your bylaws thoroughly and gone through them, and it's pretty clear that the only body, only person who can speak on behalf of the board of Western County Health Services, as Western County Health Services, is the chairman of the board. That's the only person who can speak on that, or the CEO. So I think that would answer Carrie's question. If she, if you ever have any doubts, it should always go back to the chairman of the board and allow them to speak on behalf of the board. And then the other question I would bring up is, in transparency, I heard that, well, there are things that aren't true, and then I hear there are things that are true. If the goal is to be transparent, let's talk about the things that are true or perceived to be true so they can be addressed in this session with the board and in front of the community so it can be put to rest, whether it is or isn't. That would be a recommendation, whether for this meeting or any meeting. If there's an issue, don't let it fester, address it and attack it head on, and so you can address those challenges and move forward. Address it and attack it head on, and so you can address those challenges and move forward.
I agree.
So you want us to read this letter out loud then, and address it as it come up?
I, I think it would be in the best interest to read it out loud, because there are several names, there, it was the couple of names that are sitting here right now. I think, as Bob mentioned, that the public should be aware of.
Do you want to read it? Dottie, I think that you would, ever. It's actually written, Dottie, Randy, oh, I guess Randy.
Yeah, it might be better if, if somebody there reads it, because maybe you could hear better. I'm happy to do it, just let me know.
Do you want to read it? Because my voice has shot, I'm sorry.
Well, Denise, you posted it on his website.
Yeah, and I tried to, on the website.
We can't, we can't.
But it wasn't pulling up, so I don't know if there's some reason, but I did try to look at it.
To preface this, basically, Dottie had written to him, asking him to put in a letter from the H&amp;H regarding our, our H&amp;H. Or was it, or was it this letter right here?
This letter.
And it was. Yeah, and then, and his response to this letter, was that letter? Was that right?
Yes.
So you please read.
You want me to read the one?
It was just, it was just a chairman update for the community in the midst of the turmoil to tell them that not only do we hear everyone, but we've hired, we're bringing H&amp;H on board, you know, we're looking at H&amp;H, because that was before we even had their vote, we're looking at H&amp;H to come in and help us with some of these issues. So, I'll be happy to read this, it'll take a bit, so, it's addressed to Dottie, Randy and Denise.
Okay.
I have to inform you that the letter from the hospital board chair will not run in the Newsletter Journal, but my reporter, Mary Stroka, may choose to quote some parts of it for stories she's doing on the hospital and this meeting in particular. I have a number of concerns about the behaviors of the board in this matter and with your so-called efforts at transparency. I will lay out those concerns in this email on the record for a board election that will occur unless, it would be unethical and irresponsible of me or any other news outlet to run this letter and suggest to our readers that it's not a biased account of what we have been taking, has been taking place at the hospital. 1A, I agree to let Mr. Lindauer submit a column every other week despite the fact that he has refused to speak with me about the newspaper's role in covering the hospital for the community and his unfounded criticisms of the newspaper's prior coverage of the hospital and its board in the past. I agree to allow the column in an effort to be abundantly fair to those who feel the newspapers reporting on the hospital board was too critical, but Mr. Lindauer only submitted one actual column and then followed it up two weeks later with a hastily thrown together short report that was submitted after our deadline. We ran both of those pieces and spread to the fact that they contained very little actual information and were simply self-congratulatory pats on the back for Mr. Lindauer and the board. Like this most recent letter from Dottie, they were thinly disguised advertisements for board members and the CEO and nothing more.
Before you go on, I'd like to make the correction. Dottie is our board chair, and she speaks for us.
Yes.
So I disagree with Bob's assessment that anything coming from her is an advertisement.
Because she's currently the chair?
That's because she's currently the chair.
Well, I do think it would have been wise, with Bob having made that agreement with Randy, if Randy would have just said, given Bob a call and said, is it okay if I give Dottie this?
But it also shouldn't have been done during an election. Dottie's never written a column before, and then all of a sudden she writes it, a column a month before her name is on the ballot, that isn't fair either. So Bob does have a point there.
He does, but conversely, we haven't had the issues we are facing lately, and hiring someone else to come there.
It's true, but I wouldn't have.
So it's timing.
As a person who's known campaigns a lot, I wouldn't have done that. It casts doubt.
If I may, I would counter that. It's done all the time in campaigns. The president of the United States spoke at the State of the Union, and it was effectively a campaign address, and he's the president of the United States. The letter that she submitted to, the paper wasn't submitted to one paper, it was submitted to every outlet and posted on your Facebook page, and it was meant to be a message from the chair, and up until she's, you know, not elected or another chair has spoken, she wouldn't be the appropriate person, because your bylaws also don't direct that she should designate anybody else in the organization to speak on her behalf as the chair, and it doesn't address anything to the point that the chair should not, or whoever is being elected, should not have the authority if they're the chair to speak on behalf of the organization. So there's a policy opportunity for a fix, and I think we can address as a policy change to the bylaws.
That's a very good point, and, you know, this, this whole thing, that's why I'm not really sure why we're reading it here, but because it's an opinion, you have one opinion, Bob has another opinion, and basically the voters are going to decide what their opinion is in a month, so. We can all differ, it's okay.
I don't necessarily think this needs to be.
I agree.
To be real.
I agree.
I just take it from the, yeah, I do.
And I did agree to fly down on my own to meet with Mr. Bonner down in Colorado on my own to speak to him about the paper, many times. And Denise was witness, because I, I sent the email.
Did you give him the email?
He's not called me. He has not called me personally, or from a professional standpoint, say, hey Randy, how you doing today? Can we talk about the hospital, just an email?
When I was chair, he was pretty rough on me too, so, just to say that, you know, I mean, I got several calls from him, so I don't know what is, probably there's with me or, or anybody else on this board, but he definitely has feelings.
I was just going to say, Stephen, sorry, sorry.
I did not get calls from Bob when I was chair.
Stephen was just trying to say, we're debating as a staff, or as a board here, what's true and what's not true, and I don't even know if the community or anybody knows, well, we, we're disagreeing. What are we disagreeing on?
No, I don't know.
Exactly, no, I'm not even talking about that, but like, because you said, there's stuff in there that's not, that's somewhat factual, but where? I mean, where, how does this community know what we're even talking about? That's why I think it's important that he says, we're going over the letter so we can at least talk about it. And where are we differing? Where are we as a board differing on this? Because I don't even know. So all I see is a lot of opinion. This is my interpretation, everybody's got a different interpretation. I believe, I, I don't, I mean, this is all basically, I mean, there's some, if you're looking for facts, I'm trying to highlight them, where there's facts, and, and I don't know, I don't know how we want to move forward. Do we want to keep reading this, or do we want to, talking in circles, but I'm just...
Well, we're just taking his recommendations.
Right, I, I get it. Right, so does that mean we just want to, so we're just going to point out?
Okay, 2A, on the second page. At least two members of the public that I am aware of, Mr. Sprague and Mr. Curley, were told they could not attend the Monday's special meeting because it would immediately go into executive session.
I already told you I didn't think on that.
So how do we handle that?
In the future, I think we, we always kind of talk about that, that we would, that we would need, if there was, if there were people here, that we would change our agenda to make sure and do things first, and then go into executive session.
Did you, would you tell Mr. Sprague and Mr. Curley that we would be opening it back up to public after the executive, did they know to come back?
Yes, and I objected completely throughout the whole thing. I objected in executive session, out of executive session, before executive session and after executive session, and I personally called Mr. Curley as soon as we got out of executive session and invited him back, and he was already home.
Okay. But this says could not attend the meeting, I think you said you could attend, you just had to wait till executive was over, I don't know.
No.
But I know that you checked.
No, I get it, but I'm just saying, it's, by saying you could not attend, saying that you can't come to this because we're closing it off.
Yeah, it kind of makes it sound like they weren't allowing.
Was it done in, was it, did we do it well? Absolutely not. Could we, if you could take it back, I think we would.
Yeah.
Yes.
Number three.
There was no information given to me before I left to call the executive session. It said there was a substantive meeting coming in the public on identified issue, so that I, and I left thinking the business of the meeting was being done in executive session, and I left with that impression for a good reason.
So it's sort of saying, no, we convey to you that we were going to go back out of it, and then convey your, uh...
Nobody conveyed that there was a substantive issue for which notice was given to the public that would be discussed in public.
Yeah, so we handled that wrong, is what I'm saying, that's what we handled wrong, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, number three, if Mrs. Farder was the chair for that meeting, should this letter have come to the board? Oh, may not, because I am still the chair.
I spoke to that, it had nothing to do with that meeting.
It says on the, it is our hope that everyone was able to listen to the presentation from H&amp;H, there's such solutions to board trust.
That was the first, the first one, not the second.
Okay, well, when I, just reading it, and I'm not, I'm not questioning your motive, Dottie.
Uh huh.
But just reading it, that was, what I thought when I read the first thing is, the first paragraph there, oh, she's trying to talk people into going to listen to the H&amp;H presentation since nobody was here.
No. No, because it just came out at the same time, these two things were, were sent in this email at the same time, but I had written that chairman's statement at least two weeks prior to.
Okay.
And number four.
So I understand, I understand where you would think that, but they are not connected.
Okay.
It appears from the agenda, the decision had been made to go into executive session right away. Well, why was that not made clear in the notice to the paper or the public? Wasn't it? I thought it was.
So... No, I had already, I already apologized for that. The agenda said that we may have a need for exec session, but we decided to do the exec session piece first to get it out of the way so that we could bring them back and fin, and have them do their, their presentation, their, their actual presentation of their, of their business that they wanted us to vote on, so. But I apologize for that, that was, that in the future, we'll make sure that that is much more clear, so we don't have this incident again.
There said, the executive board has repeatedly proven with the mass majority of the concerns over its empowerment, parentheses, abuse of authority, lack of transparency, exclusion of other board members, et cetera, were well founded. There is no executive board.
Right.
So I don't want to make a use of that.
There's evidence, many, and we've had many, many, many discussions about that too, so it's not wrong about that, I think.
Well, it is wrong, because there's nothing in our governance committee that ever is not transparent. We put it in the minutes every time we have a meeting.
I guess what I would ask is, where's the evidence of abuse of authority?
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm just saying, I bring it forward, you say it, you bring it forward. Exclusion of other board members, I don't, I've never felt excluded from it, to be honest with you, but that's me, I don't know if, obviously there's others that feel that way, but... but where do we have evidence of that? It could exist, I just haven't seen it.
Well, usually on governance committee, there's three people, if you have four, then you have a court, and that's not good either, so, then you have a special meeting. So you have, on committees, you just have three people, generally two to three people from the, from the board, and that's just the way business is done, I don't know, why else to explain it?
So communication, to me, so far as the common denominator among all of this, lack, I mean, the way we're communicating out to the public, the way we're communicating with each other, that seems to be where we're lacking. At least, that's my opinion. And I don't think it's by design, I don't think it's done on purpose, I guess that's, again, my opinion, however, I think that's, that's what we have to keep working on, obviously.
And everything the governance committee does, they bring it to the board for approval. I mean, I don't know how much more transparent we can get.
I'm just, this doesn't, this isn't really talking about governance committee, but, like, with the example of this, this executive session, I, I, which, and I don't, because it's executive, I don't know, I don't know if this is possible, what I said, but, like, I think that if I had an idea of what was, what we were going to talk about, and I didn't, like, I don't know, I assume it was Randy and Dottie, but I don't know, if I had an idea of what was going to happen in executive session, that would have been much easier for me to say, "Oh, let's switch it, it's not that big a deal," you know, and so, if there had been, but, but because it's executive, I personally don't know how much all the board can know that before, but I do think it would have been an easier thing to make a decision on, that ordering, if we had known what was going to happen.
Well, it's to the Chair, it makes a call, the agenda and the call, you know, I don't, we all came, because we were told to come, so...
Right, well, some...
What, didn't get them all?
Yeah, you didn't.
Oh, that's right.
That's another thing to Nick's point. Agree, because even you didn't know.
Yeah, I can't, I can't understand that.
Grateful for the...
Okay, and number...
4B.
Yeah, 4B, thank you. The fact that the board is having to hold special meetings on almost a weekly basis would indicate that the operation has become less than efficient, and it's hard to argue with the existence of an executive committee that has contributed to the present turmoil at the hospital in place. Again, there is all that we need to do. If you continually, okay, let's go back to the red marks here. Public laws can discourage participation in the public process by the majority of the board, the press, and the public itself. I don't know, maybe it's... Number five, the legality of the executive session itself is greatly in question as it does not appear that the subject discussed under the fall, would fall under the open meetings exception found in the statute. Mr. Sprague was informed with the hospital attorney, or former board, or CEO, or somebody, that this executive session was allowed under the statute, and I believe that was an error. Any comment there?
I would, just for a second, a lot of what he's saying is, to Nick's point, is conjecture, it's opinion. You have legal counsel to provide you that clear guidance on her best legal opinion, and that's what the board follows.
I would like to make a clarifying statement on that. When I came to that special meeting, and I was told that they were going directly into executive session, I brought up the concern that H&amp;H, I was informed, was going to be kind of the subject of the regular meeting, and I saw that, I was told the executive session would be under 16-4, 405 AII, which is for personnel, and H&amp;H was a contract with a company, and I questioned whether that was a legitimate reason, because they were a separate company, if that was a legitimate reason for going into executive session. That's when I was told that the attorney had been consulted, and that Allison had informed them that it was legal on those grounds, and I don't know this for sure, but the impression I get is that it was not about H&amp;H. I was not informed about that before I left from that last meeting. Had I been informed about that, it's like you said, communication. I had brought up the subject of H&amp;H, was that a legitimate reason? I was not corrected about it not being about H&amp;H, but that's the impression I'm getting now. So, again, lack of communication, lack of transparency, that's part of what transparency means.
Yes, Mr. Curley.
I'm not Allison, I like her as a person, as far as I know, but it was my thought that that notice... And who wants that mess? I'm very gratified today to see revisiting the decision to hire, because there was no notice, that was done, looked like an informational special session to hear a presentation, not to do business. So I'm glad it came up here. I'm a little concerned today, that today, dealing with the contract today was adequately noticed at this hearing. But anyway, I agree that you've got legal counsel to okay it, but I just, I think maybe there was miscommunication in there, because she's a sharp lady, and I didn't think it was proper. Thank you.
I think it would have been nice if at the time, when you guys were leaving, if either knew or Dottie, whoever knew what executive session, I mean, had clarified with either William or Walter or both.
Yeah, I mean, it was a communication, but at that time, it wasn't changed.
So, the stuff that we dealt with in...
Executive session.
Part of the, part of the reason we hired them in the first place is because of the children. So I think, I think exec session thing was, it could be, you know, for people's names to be here in charge, and so we didn't want to do that in public session. So I think that's what caution was.
And there were some legal things that we talked about. Right, and to me, it was a legitimate, I mean, I don't know the law, but the stuff that we talked about could have hurt people talking in the open.
Right.
But it just wasn't handled well.
Oh, yeah, I think we all agree with that.
Right, yeah, no, I keep beating it. Let's stipulate that.
Yeah, and then the numbers, it says, "I believe the board has been poorly advised on open meetings and public records. I believe that your training may be misinformed on other boards in the community in the past as well." Well, I guess that's another conjecture. "The hospital board is making conscious choice to interpret the law as broadly as possible, which allows you to filter the maximum amount of information that the public will allow to access, and this is dishonest." I know, we let you, you know, record us, I mean, and we have our own recording, I don't know, I don't know...
That's just his opinion.
Yeah, I get him. And being given a sole source, okay, let's see, it's a long sentence. Basically, being given sole source contracts, which are heavily crowned upon in these instances, are for good reason, I'm not sure.
What has to do with...
H&amp;H.
The relationship with the CEO.
Oh.
I think you have to read that sentence.
Yeah, that was just, that was just one in particular consultant at a different company in recruiting a CFO for myself, and the organization that I was employed with, and possibly a place in me at another organization. I don't know, I don't know all these consultants.
Okay, and then we have...
The only divorce in part about this, which we always talk about, and, and I, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm in favor of H&amp;H, so I'm not saying that, but, but we do always try to talk about giving, doing two bids kind of thing, and we didn't do that with this.
Well, time, it was a time issue.
I know, time is of essence, and we already have one provider that quit, has quit over this, and, but...
Plus it also costs a minimum of $10,000 to get them their quote.
Right. So I see that there's, so I see that there's reasons, I'm not discounting that, I'm just saying that that's where this comes from, because we are always looking that we need two bids.
Yep, I understand that, and we will.
But, but I...
That's not going to change, we're definitely going to do it.
Right, but as you recall, I did mention other firms that were around $300,000 and $225,000.
Yes, but...
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Right, yes.
It says, in number 2A, oh, I guess I read that, sorry. This one? Oh, thank you. Okay, well, I think we're done. I don't see more than... Is there anything else that we need to bring up now? So I think we've got it figured out, hopefully. Yes, Nick, please.
I think, what this is, hopefully this is a team-building exercise, I don't know if it's too late for that, but what I see is that we need to communicate better as a board to each other, we need to communicate better to the public. I think we're learning, I do think we want, the reason we hired H&amp;H, at least in my opinion, I'm going to keep saying that, is because I feel like we want to get back on track, we want to get on track with everything, and we feel like these guys are going to solve our problems, there's not, that's not what we hired them for. We hired them because we want them to help us and assist us in moving forward and get an outsider's perspective, because these guys have been in all kinds of different hospitals, they've seen it all. And if you've spoken with these guys, you understand that, us on the board, and that's why we're, we just need some help to try and get this, because we've got a lot of issues. I think you're, the thing that I keep saying to us is though, we've got to figure out, we, we're, how are we going to move forward? Otherwise, the staff is not going, they need to follow our lead, and this stuff like this that we keep seeing, and then stuff like this, we just, this we can't focus on, okay? We can't focus on this, because that's going to happen no matter what, we just got to put our heads down, and we got to go, we got to do the work, and we got to find a way that to get better. These are learning opportunities, as H&amp;H said, this is a learning opportunity, what we did wrong, and what we got to do better at. There's everything in there, do we agree with, probably not, but how do we move forward in a way that gets us to where we want to be? And that's my so far speech, but I just feel like that's, that's what we're focused on, that's what we got to, that's our energy, you got to focus on.
Yeah, we all, we all should have this thing going, what's best for WCHS.
So, hopefully we're all on the same page with that, and how do we, how do we get that to the point where we all are communicating in a way that builds trust, not distrust?
Well, I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think, you know, I attend all the meetings, and I answer all my emails, and so I think that's why I, you've said before in the past, that I know more than what you know, and that bothers you, but it's...
You're right.
But it's because I, I ask questions, and I, I dig a little bit deeper on things, so I, but that's, and I have more time, yeah, because I don't have a life.
I do have a life, I just seem to have 10.
So that's my only thing on that. My only defense is that I do, I do do that.
I agree, I think trust, communication, and I think this, just let it fly out the door and move on.
I agree. Okay, well, I just...
Steven, I just hand up guys.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Steven.
Oh, no, no worries, as a recommendation, you know, you guys have done a great job here, but potentially you might want to consider having the governance look at, within the confines of your laws, your executive session and how to notify the community. If it is a communication issue, maybe there's an opportunity there to look at that in terms of governance or bylaws, or some aspect that you can improve that piece, so it's a little bit more transparent for the community. I mean, there's obviously, you go into executive session for a reason, improve that bylaw, that governance, or that policy that addresses... That out there, because I, I think this was a very valuable exercise, to have people sit there and just communicate openly about the challenges, and get it out in the open, so congratulations, I think that's a great step forward.